I feel like the Brewers, that boy, he needs to run out on the field with the team. And what an honor it is for me to be on the same stage with our fearless and fable leaders, Scott Walker. On behalf of Paul and Jan and our family, we can't thank you enough for the support, the outpouring of support, it's a social phenomenon from our family's perspective. From the bottom of our heart, we can't thank you enough. Now, I want to introduce my brother Stan, our old brother. If Paul fought, I'd pick him up going out, I'd rid it from that guy. Two months ago, I can't believe this is two months ago, Mitt Romney asked Paul to join him on a mission to restore prosperity to all Americans. And the last time was the last two months. I used to head car care. I'm hoping after, after last Thursday's performance by Paul, we'll see if Paul will start coming back. How you getting it? Let's tell you what, after those first two days, has there ever been awards earned twice?
No.
A better case today, or a different path, a better future for America? It's been happening when we elect Mitt Romney and Paul Ryan. I was proud of Paul's performance as a brother, as brothers we were very proud. His command of the issues was obvious, but I think of mother, our mom Betty, you know, only the way I wanted to say it, said the best, and that is, "Paul behaves the way he's raised." He listened, he was respectful, he conducted himself with dignity, he conducted himself the way he does us. And it's not a species, it's not a theatrics, it ain't results, it's leadership, and that's what we're gonna get with Mitt Romney and Paul Ryan. We give leadership to big Scott Walker. We call him Scott because I remember Paul Gold's run country, he did introduce this guy from the small town, Jamesville. Scott grew up in Delman, where the big city, Wisconsin. Yeah, tell you what, it must've been something in the water, Paul and Scott growing up in the same community, with the skillset, the vision, the passion, the leadership qualities that they both have, I'm not sure what it was in the making of our beauty, but who would have guessed that we had two such phenomenal leaders that are gonna be with us today? So let me just announce and introduce our fearless governor, great friend, guy who is serving as a model for the rest of the United States, your Governor Scott Walker.
I just got a couple of things. You always just like growing up, you're right, I can't you guys, if they called us that Russ went out to Delman, a big guy in the town, he went to Jamesville, the Shaky's, and the Hall, and they actually had Hall. So it was a good time, first of all, I gotta ask a question, and see the jersey right at the front, and actually say, "I love the game." I'm sure that Paul's gonna think too to say about that as well, but I gotta tell you, oh, we, I'm an optimist, you gotta be my guy, I'm an optimist, right? So all being long, not only here in Wisconsin, but I talk to people all across the country, now, all high end backers gonna do, they're playing that undefeated team in Texas, they're gonna be down in Houston, I said, "No, I'm an optimist, this is comeback time."
That's right.
This is the time when Aaron Rodgers, everybody steps up, this is comeback time, we're gonna be back on track. I wish I said, "It's comeback time, and Aaron Rodgers is gonna throw 60 Ds," you know, I don't want to hear that. But I said, "This is comeback time," and the badgers didn't let us down. And you know what? America needs to go back. And as we know, across the state, across the country, we've got 23 million of our fellow Americans looking for work today. We've got unprecedented amounts of unemployment and poverty and chairwinds, we've got a debt that continues to grow every second, that's gonna put our kids and our grandkids in a position we don't want them to be in the future, and we've had over the last four years, deficit after deficit after deficit budget. We need a comeback. We need a comeback in America, and we have just to get to do that with Mitt Romney and Paul Ryan. Couple of months ago, when we all turned on the TV that Saturday morning, and saw Mitt Romney out in front of USS Wisconsin, Norfolk, Virginia, we knew then, we knew before he made the announcement, that Mitt Romney had what he talked to be impressive. I mean, think about it, this guy had a career in the private sector where he turned failing businesses around and saved thousands of jobs, jobs that people have today because of Mitt Romney. We knew a decade ago, when he turned the Olympics around, that this was a guy who could come in and turn things around for the better, and been a proud. And we knew, most importantly, as a governor, he took a state that had major budget debts, turned it around without raising tax, in a way that helped the private sector bring more jobs in his state. We knew that Mitt Romney had the qualifications and the skillset needed to be the next president of the United States, but on that day, in front of the USS Wisconsin, when he announced the name of his running mate, Paul Ryan, we knew he didn't just have the skills and the qualifications, we knew he had the courage and the patience. America has more than that, it's a comeback team, and America has got the team they need, they've got the skills and the qualifications. I gotta tell you, I've known Mitt Romney for some time, I didn't impress with him, but when he picked Paul Ryan, there's not anyone else I know, outside of Mitt himself, that has more passion, more courage, more intelligence when it comes to turning things around, reforming government, but more important than that, I think all of you, and those currently knows it, that anybody's who's been with Paul for years now, inner outside of politics, is not a decent person we could have on the ballot with Mitt Romney. Ladies and gentlemen, let's hear a warm welcome to the next president-elect.
I told you, my man, I'll be able to see my email after the time. Nothing better than going to bed with 60 Ds. I gotta tell you, if you go down to Texas, against a 5-0 team on the road, and have that kind of performance, it reminds me of what it's gonna look like on November the 6th. I remember my dad and I, our Tuesday, and when I carried my phone with me was to play some Orange and Camel Claws. That reminds me, after this election, I'm gonna get to sit in a tree stand with my ten-year-old daughter, her first year hunt, after we have just led Mitt Romney. We want, you know what was great? It's so good to be home, by the way. You know, to go to mass, to own hair, to watch the package on TV, and we went out and got our king's costumes yesterday. It is so fantastic to be home, it's great to be here, I have all of my brothers, and it's great to be here with my friend, our governor, Scott Walker. I think it's great, thank you for coming out so early, thank you for standing in the long lines, thank you for being here with us today. Let's not forget, early morning starts pretty soon, so you go early, you go early on TV so that you can make sure we work on getting phone calls, getting people to the polls. Because you know what we learned here in Wisconsin? We learned that men win without conviction. I see all burnin' promises anyway. That you say to people, "Well, here's who I am, this is what I believe, and this is what I'm going to do," in Wisconsin, we elect them, and then they go do it, and that's exactly what we're gonna do. That's in our venture, in here in Wisconsin, leadership. Look at that debt plot over there. Look at how fast those numbers are running. When President Obama came into office, it was one $5 trillion dollar lower. The president came into office saying he would cut the deficit in half in his first term. He's given us four years of trillion-dollar debts. He has added almost more public debt than almost all previous presidents combined. Not only do we have string of broken promises, not only do we have a string of a lack of leadership, this debt is not only hurting our economy today, it is guaranteeing that these young kids, who are getting their Halloween costumes, are gonna go out trick-or-treating as a diminished future. We have never done that in this country before. We have never knowingly given our kids an inferior center of belief, a diminished future, but that is exactly what we are doing by icing off this mountain of debt, by hitting these deficits, and it takes leadership to accomplish. That's what Mitt Romney and I are offering. We are not gonna run away from these problems, we're going to run at these problems. I look at the state of the economy today, I look at the fact that half of all our recent college graduates are either not working in the field that they studied, or are working at all. That is unacceptable. 23 million Americans are struggling to find work. 15% of Americans are living in poverty today, that's the highest rate of generation. This is not acceptable. This is not what America looks like. We are on the wrong track, and the good news is, if we get ahead of our problems, if we tackle our problems before they tackle us, we can get America back on the right track. And these young kids telling us, "We'll come to a country of good." I see a lot of them for their faces here, but I'm gonna order 500 come-home meetings in Wisconsin. So you know I'm a public point guy, so let me get into this a little bit, I do it. There are monitors all around. Take a look at our debt. Now, if you look at this debt here, it looks like a big mountain over on the left. That's World War II. We've had debt in America before, we've always had debt, people have debt. What matters is how much debt you have relative to your income. You only buy so much house to only pay so much mortgage that you can cash flow based on your paycheck. It works the same way for countries as well. And sometimes, you have a lot of debt. You know, Scott mentioned the USS Wisconsin, that was such a moment. My mom told me afterward, "My mom's from Montalak," and it's one race there, her dad was an Navy man, and so in World War II, they moved around quite a bit. And they got to go on deck of a brand-new ship, they were a Navy day, that was on the USS Wisconsin, out of San Francisco. My mom is there, it's the third World War II, we had to go out in the back. I see veterans around here, because I see underhanded. Thank you for giving us the freedom we have today. That's World War II. We lent our government, our money, to fight the end of World War II. Our debt got as high as the size of our economy. We borrowed a little more than 100% of our gross domestic product. And you can have high borrowing like that so long as it's temporary, so long as it's for you, that gave it purpose, and you know it's gonna go back down after that. And so that's what we did back then, we sold war bonds. Our citizens gave our government their money, what they lent them to fight the end of World War II, and then our debt went down after that. Look at where we are right now. This is what our government is telling us our debt is going to become. This is where we are headed. Our debt is able to literally hit off all the charts. It's supposed to go to more than two and a half times the size of our economy by the time of my age or my age. Jan and I live in Jamesville, we live on the block from you, we've got three kids who are seven, nine, and 10 years old. We know without a shred of doubt that we are consigning the next generation to this path of debt, that we are racking up so much bills in our generation that we are guaranteeing that they will not have a better future, that they will have a diminished future. That's what I'm saying, we can't keep doing that. It's giving more obligation for the sake of our economy today, but for the sake of the next generation's security and energy for our children and our grandchildren. And that means leadership. As I mentioned, we've had debt before, and usually we lent it to ourselves. Americans find treasury bills to lend to the American government, right? Well, in 1970, we had a $283 billion debt. 6% of our debt was owned by foreigners, by foreign governments, 84% was owned by Americans. We borrowed more money, the debt got bigger, and about 1990, our debt was $2.4 trillion, that's our public debt, that's how many bonds we had to sell. 19% of our debt was owned by foreign governments. So we still owe the majority of the money we borrowed to ourselves. We'll look at where we are today. Our public debt is so big, that it's public debt is $1 trillion, our total debt's over $6 trillion. 48% of the money we borrowed is from other countries, countries like China number one, Japan number two. What this means is, we have to go to other nations to borrow money from them to pay for our government today. We can't keep doing this. We lose our independence, we lose our sovereignty. It's pretty tough to stand up to China when they steal our intellectual property rights, when they subsidize our businesses to unfairly compete against ours, when they're our biggest enemy. We need to get this debt under control so that America can be in control of its own destiny, its own financial district. Take a look at your share of the debt. Now, I'm just going trillions and billions and all of these things. What does this mean for individuals or families? When President Obama came into office, he did a very tough situation. Problem is, he didn't get his words. Problem is, as we see this most predictable crisis that had to do with debt crisis, what leaders do is they solve those problems. Here's what the president did. He didn't offer a solution, he waited for others on the cell to offer hours, and then just attacks. Then he runs his negative campaigns, he distorts. The president, as we all along the country lately, is saying he has a plan. You know, I found that kind of interesting, I attended one of his seats before he mentioned his plan, I guess. And he said, "I've got a plan to deal with this." We were like, "Great, he's got a plan, let's start talking, let's see his plan." We put ours on the table, Mitt Romney's put a lot of ideas on the table, how to fix this problem. That's how you start problem solving. So we called his office, his budget office, and said, "Hey, can you send us the plan? We'd like to see it." The budget office went away, they referred us over to the press secretary, and the press secretary sent us a copy of the speech. We asked the budget office, "Could you analyze the president's new plan to deal with deficit?" They said, "It's a speech," and we don't ask any speeches. That's the problem. The president gives lots of speeches, but he's not actually putting plans on the table. Leaders leave by putting specifics on the table, by saying, "Here's what he's offered for the plan." And so when President Obama came into office, neither of them had no situation. Both political parties contributed to this mess, Republicans and Democrats. You see what's happened is, decades of politicians from both political parties made lots of empty promises to the people to get elected. And pretty soon, if we have a debt crisis, like that which is now playing in Europe, these empty promises become broken promises. That's what's happening here today. They're slashing health and retirement benefits for current seniors, they're drinking up assets, they're going back into a recession, and young people coming out of school, young people coming out of the plan with their life at no opportunities. The unemployment rate of youth in Italy increased over 50%. But look at that, whole generation of people. If we copy and follow European economics, we will copy and follow European results. That's the path that President Obama has us on, and that's the path we're gonna be on, but it'll be a lot of it, Mitt Romney, whatever it is. Your share, that young person with the elephant costume on, every man, woman, and child's share of the national debt was $36,000 when President Obama came into office. Now, four years of failed leadership on empty promises, it's gone up 45%, it was $51,000. That is a share of debt that every single person has, every child born in this society, in our community, in Wisconsin, starts off $51,000 in debt. That's something we simply cannot afford. We cannot afford to keep pinning this debt on for our children and our grandchildren. We can't keep doing this, because when it does, it hurts our economy today, and it destroys tomorrow. It says to all those small businesses who create our jobs, today's big deficit is nothing more than tomorrow's big tax increase. It says that because of the Federal Reserve and all the money we're getting, that we might just have a big inflation problem down the road. It says that we'll have higher interest rates, because people like China won't keep lending us their money at such low interest rates if we don't show that we're getting our fiscal situation under control. It hurts jobs today, it destroys jobs tomorrow, and we need to fix this problem before it takes out of our control. Now, I want to make you feel more than that. Let's just have a good old-fashioned listening session, a town hall meeting. So let me just ask for a show of hands, we'll go around, we've got people with microphones, so please give me your hands, and let's have a good old-fashioned town hall meeting, and then let's just wait for the microphone, hold this lady over here, and then just wait for the microphone to come, and then let's do it all around.
Hi, Ryan. Thank you so much for everything that you've done. I'm sure I've undermined your privilege. I have a question as far as restrictions medications and how it fits in with the plan that you and Governor Romney.
So, also, is it Medicare talking as well, right? So if you take a look at Obamacare, one of the studies that have come out since Obamacare passed is that Obamacare actually raises the price of restrictions. Our interest is not raising the restriction prices, it's keeping the prices lower. One thing we learned, though, about the Part D Restriction Drug Program, it is a program that is often called premium support. So here's what happened. The Restriction Drug Program was designed in a way that gives the senior citizen, the beneficiary, the right to choose the plan that's right for her. So she is the nucleus of the Restriction Drug Program. What that means is, she gets to pick the plan that she likes. If she doesn't like her plan this year, she can get rid of it and get another plan next year. These plans happen, they can't carry back, they have to pay all costs, and we force Restriction Drug Providers to compete against each other for her business, and we subsidize her premiums based on who she is. Total coverage if she's low-income, good coverage if she's low-income, not as much coverage if she's a higher-income person. And what this has done has brought costs below what we thought would be by 41%. Name me another program that came in 41% below cost per justice than this one. And usually, when a government passes a new program, the costs go way up. This one didn't. Why is that? Because she is in charge, and these providers have to compete against each other for her business. That brought prices down, that brought restriction drugs down, that brought premiums down. That is precisely the kind of lesson that we learned that we want to apply to the rest of Medicare for my generation. Here's the deal, you know, I look at my mom, she's a perfect example. After my dad died, she went to get on the bus, her age, go to Madison, she got a new degree, she got a new skill, she started a small business, you know, no more free employees at any one time, I think. And she made all her payroll taxes on the promise that Medicare would be here for her. It is. That's a promise we simply must keep. And what we've learned is, we can keep that promise for my mom's generation, for those who are within 10 years of retiring, if you rewind for my generation. Let's never forget, right now, that Medicare is making tens of trillions of dollars of promises to people that it has no means of paying for. It's not a partisan thing, it's a math thing. You got 10,000 people retiring each year of the day, the baby boomers, and they're gonna be doing so for 20 years, but because it's our pay as you know, correct, my payroll tax rate for my mom's Medicare, you have a 100% increase in the Medicare beneficiaries, but only a 17% increase in after retiring program. For all of those of you who had kids in the 50s and 60s, you did a great job, you had a whole bunch of them. But our birth rate declines instead, our population is different, and so with this program, Medicare grows an 8% a year, and we're done with the mom retirees on it, that creates a real fiscal problem. And so President Obama's answer is this: First, take $716 million from Medicare to pay for Obamacare. Mark my words, listen to the president's chief act story. You can't spend the same dollars twice, you can't say, "I'm taking $716 million from Medicare program for providers and spending it on..." and spending it on Obamacare and say that that is good for Medicare, that goes to Medicare." It doesn't. The second thing he does, and this is the more likely dangerous proposal of Obamacare, is it puts 15 people in charge of Medicare that he appoints next year. But a lot is being required that they have any medical training. Fifteen people, and they're in charge, they have six-year term renewal once, and they are required each and every year, starting in 2014, to cut Medicare, pay new providers in ways that these deny care for current seniors. So the philosophy, the difference is this. We want to get rid of that Medicare board. We want to stop the rate of Medicare. We believe the best way to save Medicare, the best way to lower restriction prices is to re-kill Obamacare. It's not unlike the current plan I have with Congress for our federal employee. It works like that Restriction Drug Program. For people 54 and below, they become Medicare eligible. You can listen, guaranteed choices. Guaranteed plans that are comprehensive, can't be denied, including traditional Medicare. You make your plan, they compete against each other for your business, just like we do with the Restriction Drug Program. You make a plan, you like it, and then Medicare subsidizes your premiums. 100% out-of-pocket coverage if you're low income or sick. The same high coverage you have that middle-class people have today, and not as much with higher-income people. Doing it this way, using choice and competition, putting the patient as the center of the equation, not 15-year flash to Washington, is the best way to save strength in Medicare, prevent it from going bankrupt for my generation, and is the best way to secure this program with no changes for my mom's generation. That is exactly how we propose, not to dismiss the restriction issue, but to save Medicare for our people. Waiting for the mic to be aligned.
Why are their ballots not getting to our servicemen in the arena?
Our government, in this case our state government, G A B, not John. You can't selectively enforce our election laws. You can't selectively enforce voting rights. And of all the people who have a right to vote, it's our men and women in uniform, especially those who are in the We have to go to remain our campaign of having to bring lawsuits to make sure that these men and women who are getting their absentee ballots, who are serving the military, who are overseas, have enough time to be able to return their ballots so that their votes are counted. We're in court right now, trying to guarantee that our men and women serving the military have this right deserved for them. And I gotta tell you, we've gotta win this case because if there's anything that counts, it's your right to vote. Because if a single soldier is denying his or her right to vote, that's a shame. That's not what we can stand for this country. They're not there fighting for our freedoms right now. They're not there securing our right to vote. The least we can do is give them enough time because their ballots got to go late to make sure that their ballots come back and that they are counted. Out of the general ready, is there a mic over here?
Best of luck to you as our next vice president.
Yes, sir.
There was a time in American history when our country terminated the presidency. Would you and Governor Romney consider a proposal to terminate, terminate the members of Congress? Example, two six-year terms for a US senator and six two-year terms for a member of Congress?
Yeah. I constantly imagine when I was in Congress, I agree with that, I've always supported that in Congress. In that case, a constitutional amendment, what you don't want to do is have a state do it to itself and shortchange its seniority and its part in Congress. But I've always been a fan of terminals, I've always supported that. I've always believed that this should be something that you serve temporarily after an entire lifetime. Look, what we have right now in front of us is a crisis of leadership. What we have right now in front of us is this debt comp block spinning out of control. It's a government that is borrowing and spending money we don't have. And right now, we've gotta fix this problem. And I do believe that we've gotta change the mindset. That is, too many politicians like President Obama, and there are a lot of people like him in Washington, are more worried about their next election than they are about the next generation. That's gotta change. Come on over here. I'll just stand right here. Wait for a mic, you don't mind, no one can hear you over here.
My husband, I had the pleasure of being here two years ago at a SOS summit. You took a meeting with me, you sat down with your aides, I don't know if you remember me, but I helped him serve 26 years as a Green Beret. And you took the time, a half hour of your busy schedule, to sit down with a little widow like me, and you cared. And I called my mom and dad right after that meeting, and I said, "Mom, I think I just met a future president."
Thank you, yeah. I'm a union electrician. What I would like to know, every day I get these mass mailings from our union IDW.
Yep.
Anyway, you know, and guys at work, you know, of course, half of them are one way and half are the other. But these, what can I tell them, or what can you tell? You know, hard-working union people who, for whatever reason, support this failed policy we've been through. What can we do in the future? What are you gonna do for guys like me, for their working stiffs?
That's a great question. You gotta have jobs, right? We want to work economy. And when you tax something more, you get less of it. When you tax something less, you get more of it. So if you tax families and small businesses more, you get less take-home pay for that family. You get less income for that small business and you get less jobs. If you lower tax rates for families, they get more take-home pay. They can get ahead, they can save, they can start planning for the future. And if you lower tax rates for businesses, then they have more for their business to expand and to create more jobs. This is not a new idea. Jack Kennedy did this, and it created jobs. Ronald Reagan and Dick O'Neill did this in the 80s, it unleashed untrusted economic growth. That was in the 20th century. We're in the 21st century. Here is one of our problems. We are in fierce global competition. And so it's not just, you know, an electrician working for a general contractor, working at a school, or something like this. It's the fact that most of our businesses pay their taxes as individuals. In Wisconsin, nine out of 10 businesses pay their taxes as individuals. Drive around any one of our cities, and I'm at Scottsdale, Alabama, 43. You will see industrial park after industrial park after industrial park. And in each one of those industrial parks is a business. Five employees, 15 employees, 215 employees. Nine out of 10 of those businesses, when they expand, they hire electricians, they hire general contractors, they build things. They pay their taxes as individuals. President Obama is promising, is coming to turn a law that if he's be like it in January, their effective top tax rate goes to 44.8%. Put it this way, you throw the Wisconsin income tax on top of the new federal income tax that our manufacturers and our small businesses pay, and we are gonna be taxing our businesses at such higher tax rates than our foreign competitors tax theirs. And here's what happens. When your foreign competitors are getting taxed at a much lower rate than you are, they win, we lose. Overseas, which to us means less spirit, right? The Canadians, they just lowered their tax rate to all of their businesses to 15% last January. The average tax rate on businesses in the industrialized world is 25%. President Obama is saying, "Let's raise it up 40%." What that means is, less money for our businesses to expand at much higher tax rates that kills their ability to compete. This tax increase that he's talking about, it doesn't even pay for 10% of his proposed deficit spending increases. So this notion that we can just pass a few people, he wants you to think it's some Wall Street tycoon or, you know, Brian Braun or some movie star. It's really the businesses that create our jobs. This tax increase saves over half of small business income. It's a million small businesses, and this tax increase is expected to lose us 710,000 jobs. What Mick and I are proposing is a five-point plan for stronger economic growth, for stronger growth rates. It starts with channeling small businesses. Lower tax rates cost overall about 20%. And, you know, they keep talking about loopholes. Look at the top two tax bracket payers. They're the ones who get most of the tax write-offs, the most loopholes. That means a lot of their income is sheltered from taxation. They're way through tax shelters, lower their income subjects to taxation, which allows us to lower tax rates for everybody across the board, for families, for elderly families, for success of small businesses. There's enough room to make sure that families have these things, I encourage homeownership, shared living, healthcare, savings. The point is this. We don't have a cash problem in Washington, we have a spending problem in Washington. For the IDW, for pipe hitters, for manufacturers, for excavators, for, I know operating engineers well because that's a business I'm familiar with, Urquhart. My cousin's running a Urquhart business in Jamesville. The president personally intervened to stop the Keystone Pipeline from coming into this country. That one project, we're gonna give us tens of thousands of good union jobs, tens of thousands of good jobs, of pipe hitters, of pipeline maker, of pipeline, you know, construction jobs. And we're gonna brought that Canadian oil into America, instead of going to China where it'll go if you don't use it. Our second point is, we have got all this energy in North America. Let's use that energy in North America. We can need North American energy in the better idea this decade if we set our minds to it, that's precisely what we're proposing to do. And there are a lot of people who are in between jobs. Jamesville, we've got a lot of people who are in between jobs. We've got great technical schools here in Wisconsin. We've got great training facilities at some of our union, I've been over out to labor to see this fantastic training facility that we guys have. We need to have a system where people can get the staples that they need if they're in between jobs or if they're working a temporary job, so they get back on their feet so they get the careers that they wanted in 21st century. We need to fix our schools, we need to make sure that job searching is there for people who are in between jobs. We're gonna get this deficit under control, but we gotta make sure, given the fact that 95% of the rural consumers live overseas, we gotta open up markets for our prize, so we can make more things in America, grow more things in America that sell overseas. Specifically, what I'd like to see, specific, forward growth solutions to grow the economy, to create jobs so people have higher take-home pay, so people have better jobs, so they can get ahead instead of falling behind, as so many people are in society today.
Hi, I'm 13, and I was wondering, by the time I'm ready to buy a house, will they come and meet me? Will they come and come?
The answer is, we can turn this around if we put the right leaders in place, if we put the right ideas in place. I met a guy in Kentucky the other day. He was telling me about, his dream was to be able to buy a house for his family. He started a restaurant, it started going well, then he tried opening a few more. Started two, three, four, bankrupt, bankrupt, bankrupt. His restaurants were going down, they weren't working, he and his family had a living on his parents' space. His dream was to be able to just own his own home, to put a roof over his family by himself. He failed at this dream three times, but he kept working at it because in America, if you had first chance to see, try, try again. This guy started a restaurant called Texas Roadhouse. We got one of these in Jamesville. And he has become phenomenal success because he kept working at it. He failed, he failed, he failed, he kept working at it because he knew that in this country, you could just work hard enough, you could get ahead, you worked hard, you put out a goal, you get ahead. And now he's a really nice house to stay in. The point is, we have the most dynamic society, the most exceptional country, and we can have the fastest growing economy that produces the most prosperity. The American idea, the American system of liberty and free enterprise has gone more to help the poor, has been more to get people access to opportunities so people can restore rights wise than any other economic system ever designed. Why would we want to replace it? We want to revive it, we want to revitalize it. I have held out on my mind that we can turn this economy around, we can get it going fast, we can start creating jobs literally next year. You know what's in front of us? We have a blockade. We have a president who said he'd do all these things and he's broken these promises. We have a president who, with all the broken promises he's said that he's bringing people together to solve the country's problems, it's the most partisan hat of the scene we've ever had. We have a president who believes that borrowing and spending, regulating money burning, and raising taxes is the secret to economic success. We know that that doesn't work. Look at here, it's not working there. So we need a new president. And we have a president in Mick Romney who will be a good president. You know why I was gonna give him a good president? This man, of all the things about Mickey Romney, you know, leadership is the first thing that comes to mind. This man is a successful job creator. By the way, being successful in business, that's a good thing. The answer is yes. Because you know why I'm so confident to answer your question, yes? Because we're gonna win this election. Those who can't have a voice in Congress are gonna go to Mick Romney.